I'd like to welcome you to our study session this evening. We have two different study sessions and we are going to start off with our space utilization update and then we will move on to our mental health and behavioral health update. Tonight, Mr. Leo Schluter and Mrs. Heather Anguiano are executive directors for elementary schools and Dr. Jennifer Fletcher, executive director for assessment accountability and research, will present an update on the space utilization project. Ms. Schluter.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Well, Madam President, members of the board, district administration, I want to thank you for having us here tonight to present to you the space utilization project that we're going to be undertaking over the course of the next few months. Along with myself, Leo Schluter, Executive Director of Elementary Education, I have with me my fellow Executive Director of Elementary Education, Heather Anguiano, and our Executive Director of Research, Assessment and Accountability, Dr. Jennifer Fletcher, and they'll be presenting some information as well. As we get started, I think it's important to review the goals of the project and the reasons that we're going to be undertaking this committee work moving forward. In reviewing these goals, we've highlighted the key words that best describe the overall purpose and intent of the committee work that we're going to engage in. So as you look at goal one, it's really to identify space to expand those choice offerings and to continue to expand the choice because we know that CUSD prides itself on being a district of choice. If you look at bullet points two and three, they really kind of tie together very well as we look to maximize our district resources by being fiscally responsible with the resources that we have in hand. And then, of course, we want to continue to proactively address our capture rates. And I want to speak a moment just on capture rates because typically we've spoken about enrollment and sometimes we tend to think of enrollment as a kind of a static measurement when really when we look at our capture rates, we're really talking about three pieces. Capture rates is that broad view because we know we have students that we've captured, that we have, for lack of a better word, we've captured, we have enrolled, and we want to retain them. We want to retain them K-12. We also have students that we've captured and we've lost. They've gone elsewhere perhaps, and we want to recapture those students and we want to bring them back into the Chandler Unified School District student body. We also have students that we haven't even yet, we have yet to capture. So I want you to think of when we use the term capture rate, that it encompasses those three pieces that we're constantly taking a look at. And then finally, we're going to be looking, part of this committee's work is going to be to look to identify some potential sites that may be, may be needed for repurposing down the road to meet obviously those four goals above it as well. Okay? Last October 18th, as you can recall, Applied Economics came out here and presented to you a study session on the demographic and enrollment update report. They detailed key areas of consideration for Chandler schools in the years ahead, and it's based on the historical, the current, and future trend data. I've recapped some of those key points on this slide to give you more of a context and a reasoning for our need to look at the space and the facility usage district wide. I'm sorry, as I move on to the next slide. So as we go through some of those bullet points, you will know the demographic report points out that our enrollment growth has been declining since 2016-17, dropping to less than 1% over the last two years. Our population of students under the five, under five years of age has steadily declined from 8.7% in 2000 all the way down to 6.5% in 2020. Our population of, in the ages of 22 to 54 continues to decline, and that is identified as our primary parenting cohort. And then, of course, we know that our housing inventory currently favors an older household profile, which is likely to limit growth potential for elementary grades up through the 2030-31 school year. Currently, now this is as of September, as of October 18th of last year, 18 charter schools were operating within the district boundaries, serving approximately 10,400 students. We know that our district enrollment is projected to decrease by approximately 270 students per year, with our strongest enrollment declines happening between '24-'25 and '27-'28. So we know some of those declines are future out from where we're at right now. And our birth rates continue to decline. We see that in our kindergarten enrollment numbers, with the most recent decline having a pretty significant impact, they believe, on incoming classes through at least the '25-'26 school year. These again can also be found on the demographic report that was presented to you last October. The next couple of slides, I'm just going to detail you our timeline as we go through this space utilization process. Obviously, we've a stat, we, last March, we sat down and we established the goals that I shared with you for this project. At the end of the last school year, we reached out to the schools that were going to be in consideration, that Mrs. Anguiano will be speaking to you about, and asked them to identify some key committee people so that we would have that committee ready to hit the ground running at the beginning of this school year. So those committee members have been identified and have already received invitations to the committee work. And then, of course, we presented this, this space utilization presentation to our cabinet, first for review, and then, of course, we're here tonight presenting to you. We know that we're going to be coming back, so, well, let me preface it. First of all, we have the committee work. Our first committee date is September 15th with a follow-up on October 25th. Those are already scheduled, okay? And if there is a need for a third date, we will identify that. We're going to be coming back to the board in a follow-up study session on November 16th to present to you the very information that came out of the committee work. And then we do know that based on decisions, that further decisions that may be made through district administration and the board, we will be holding further community meetings at selected sites. Public comments will be invited at a future board meeting, as well as any future meetings that might need to be had to, to deal with any of the further decision making that comes out of the committee work and further decisions from the board and district administration. So we talk about repurposing, and my last, our last goal was to really identify some key sites for the repurposing of, to meet the previous four goals. I mean, I think it's important to know not just what repurposing is, but what does it look like in Chandler? What have we done in the past as well? So from a repurposing standpoint, we know that it's, it's to change or make a change to something so that it can be used for a different purpose. Well, in Chandler schools, the repurposing of land or buildings is done in order to achieve one or more of three purposes. To enhance the existing structure land for addressing declining enrollment, and we've done, we've seen that with the likes of CTA Humphrey, who had, which had a declining enrollment, and we've made some changes there. We saw the likes of Erie Elementary. I was the principal of Erie Elementary when they repurposed Erie to meet that declining enrollment, as well as Knox Elementary. And they do, oftentimes that repurposing serves multiple goals here, as you're going to see. So that's one of the reasons we repurpose. One of the other reasons is to change a structure or land to address programmatic needs, such as Erie Elementary. Not only was it declining enrollment, but we also had Hamilton Prep at the time that was busting at the seams, and we needed, we needed to be able to identify a space that allowed for better programming, which then became ACP Erie. We saw the same thing with Weinberg, okay? As we built a new school, we knew from a programmatic standpoint that we needed to open up a second gifted academy in the southeast version, in the southeast portion of the valley. So the repurposing and some of the work that we did at Weinberg Elementary to make it a gifted academy allowed us the opportunity to address the programming needs that were going to be needed for student needs and the school. And then, of course, and while, and then at CTA Liberty as well, we did some structural changes to CTA Liberty in terms of adding an additional building because while, while the, the enrollment didn't shift dramatically, we didn't know, we did, we did anticipate that that neighborhood was maturing out, and we brought in, we brought in an additional building to house the, to house students, and you'll see as I oversee, as I share some things, that with our DLI program, that's given us the opportunity to see an increase in enrollment there. And then finally, it's, we look at changing a structure or land to accommodate overall district student needs. One of the examples is we took our CUSD bus bond right off of Galveston, I believe it is, and, and we revamped that into our student services building, which allowed us to better streamline all the student services and the student service needs so that we can better address all of our students. And then, of course, there always exists the opportunity as well that we continue to look at, to provide space for student populations while existing buildings, while existing facilities may need to be rebuilt or have capital improvements completed to those buildings. So I want to take you through some of our sites. As I said, we repurpose for a variety of reasons. This isn't new to Chandler Unified Schools. We've, we've engaged in this process in the past. If you look at CTA Goodman, okay, CTA Goodman opened in 1988. It was repurposed in 2006, 2007 to our Chandler Traditional Academy. We recognized that we needed that, we needed a model with the increased demand of that, of that program. We needed that model in the northwest version of our district. We added CTA Choice to that. And by way, it also has, has allowed us to accommodate increased open enrollments. CTA Goodman, 65% of their students actually attend on open enrollment. When you look at Erie Elementary School, a school dear to my heart as I was the principal there, I also started my teaching career at Erie Elementary in fifth grade. So we recognized that that neighborhood had matured out. It was a declining enrollment, and at the same time, we also had a program, Hamilton Prep, that needed, that needed someplace to grow because we knew that that population and that demand for that program was growing. So we repurposed Erie Elementary in 1213 to be ACP Erie. That addressed the declining enrollment at Erie. It had also met the need for what was Hamilton Prep previously. We now know that ACP has moved to their new campus in 2122, and they are now ACP High School, which again allows them to address greater growth, and it has given us the opportunity to increase growth at our ACP Middle School, which has moved there, which moved to the ACP Erie campus. As you look at, I have up here too on my charts, as you look at the enrollment from roughly 2007, we pulled some numbers, 2010, I think it's important to note that I have an asterisk next to 2021. We know that the 2020-2021 school year was a little bit of an anomaly with our COVID pandemic, so you're, you're going to see numbers that have drastically shifted in some cases, and then we've been able to rebound and work our way back towards what existing enrollment was. But when you look at the 2021 and you see those numbers, we can equate a good portion of that to our COVID pandemic. So we go to Knox Elementary. I mentioned that as, as a declining population. It was opened in 1974. To address that declining enrollment, we began the tradition, we began the transition to a gifted academy in 2011, 2012. For, for a period of time, we housed both neighborhood families, neighborhood students, as well as gifted students, and we made that full transition to Knox Gifted Academy in 2014-15. And as you can see, they've, they've maintained a healthy enrollment since. CTA Liberty, as I spoke to you before, opened in 2002. We built that additional wing in 2004. We added our Spanish DLI programming in 2015 and 16, and now they are a full K6 DLI school, and they actually happen to have two DLE, which is our dual-language exploration preschool programs. Okay? Again, with Liberty, approximately 65% of those students currently now attend on an open enrollment. 41% of them are from out of the boundary, while we pulled 24% of those open enrollments from out of district altogether. And interestingly enough, about 46% of the student population at CTA Liberty attends the DLI program. So they are approximately 50-50 attending DLI versus CTA. The last two, I want to speak to you, the last three is Humphrey Elementary, opened in 1986. We want, we needed, we knew we needed to address declining enrollment.
Let me interrupt real quick.
As well. We repurposed that to CTA Humphrey in 2012-13, and then subsequently brought on the EPA programming by adding a new building in 1718. And you can see that while enrollment has fluctuated bits and pieces back and forth.
Leo, Mr. Worth has a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Try not to use initials, like DLI, I'm not really familiar with it.
I'm, I'm sorry, dual-language immersion. So it's our, it's our dual-language sites. I'm sorry, Mr. Worth. We speak in acronyms all too often, I need to remember.
And that dual-language instruction program at Liberty was Spanish?
Is Spanish, yeah.
Right.
So we added the EPA, which is our Elite Performance Academy. It meets the needs for those students who are in training regimens or athletic regimens where they require a modified school day in order to meet their instructional needs. So we added that building in 2017-18, and then that's, that's helped to maintain some of the enrollment at CTA Humphrey as well. Hartford Sylvian Sinus opened in 1957. We added TOPS, and off the top of my head, it is TOPS, stands for...
Talent plus opportunity equals potential.
Thank you. Talent plus opportunity equals potential. And what we've allowed, what's that, what that's allowed us to do is to be able to identify students, okay? Particularly students in our Title I schools who, through, through an assessment, that have, that need an accelerated model, that qualify for an accelerated model or a gifted model of some sort, okay? So that we can, and we provide that at Hartford, at Hartford Elementary. We see that because of that, that's helped Hartford to really maintain a strong capture rate, okay? However, I have a note down there that Hartford may need some consideration as we move forward with, and one of the, one of the purposes for repurposing I spoke to you about was this idea that we had, we do have sites that are going to need some rebuilding or capital improvements to maintain the facility structure and to maintain the strong capture rates. So Hartford Sylvian Sinus as a, as a campus may need some consideration there. And finally, Anderson Elementary School, opened in 1985. The board members, we came to you last year and presented a study session on the IB, which is the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. We are moving forward with that program at Anderson Elementary. They are in the candidacy phase right now, and they, they expect to be fully authorized by the end of this school year, moving into the '23-'24 school year. So now I'm going to hand this over to Mrs. Anguiano. She's going to talk to you a little bit about the schools that are in consideration and the upcoming committee work that we're going to undertake.
Thank you. So as you can see at this slide, we've narrowed it down to eight schools that are invited to be a part of the study. Mistress Leeder did mention Hartford Sylvian Sinus. They are not considered in this initial repurposing committee work, whereas we're looking at them more if there are capital improvements, they'll be considered at that point. So the eight schools that are going to be part of the repurposing work, you can see up here, and they range anywhere from being opened in 1960 to 2005. So we've got a 2000, a 45-year span, looking at our schools. Typically, when we would look at repurposing, we would look at schools in the northern part of the district. That's where we see a lot of our decline enrollment, looking at the demographers report, but knowing that we needed to look globally, and so we've identified two schools in the southern part of the district who, based on the demographers report and our data, are showing a decline enrollment. So there we have Hull and Navarette. So Hull's on the left 30, and Navarette is 32. So these eight schools are, have been identified and will be a part of the repurposing committee work that will be taking place. As Mr. Schluter said, it's really important that we have our community be a part of this discussion, especially the school communities. We want them to have a voice, and we want to hear from them. We want to hear considerations that they want us to take back and gather more information. So invitations were sent out to all of the committee members July 28th, and we did share the two dates with them. As Mistress Leeder said, we have a date in September and a date in October. We're hoping to share the information with them and give them an opportunity to ask questions and to challenge us with finding more data that we can go back and share with them. Principals were asked to select committee members, so each school will have two parents, two staff, and then, of course, the principal. Our two meetings right now, and once again, as Mr. Schluter said, if we need to have a third meeting, we are certainly open to that, but this is the framework that we have set for the first two meetings, really sharing the goals and rationale so they know the why behind these repurposing meetings and why we're looking at repurposing, looking at the demographers data with them. So what is the historical data as it relates to student enrollment and neighborhood capacity, and then get their feedback of what information do they want us to look at, and that will be part of the exit activity. So we're going to share the purpose, why are we looking at this, the historical data, what does this look like in Chandler, the trends from the demographers report, and then we're going to ask them to leave any questions or anything else they want us to consider that we can bring to the second meeting. Then in that second meeting, we're going to review the goals, the why once again, and then we're going to give each school an opportunity to share their school story. What's something unique about their school? What's something they want the greater community and committee to know about their school? And then we're going to have a gallery walk. So each school is going to share their story. We're going to capture information, and then the committee will go around, and we're going to give each committee member two dots. So they're going to go around and they're going to place their two dots on two schools that they would like to be considered further for repurposing, and then we're going to ask them for anything else that they want to be considered, or if they feel that we need to have a third meeting. Once again, we want to make sure that our community members are involved, that they're being heard, and we're giving them an opportunity to be educated and having as much information as they can possibly have. Now, Dr. Fletcher's going to share data that we've used to identify the schools and moving forward.
All right. Good evening. This slide just presents a high-level overview of the data we're going to use. I'm going to breeze through it because I'm going to walk you through the data slides. This first slide is our enrollment data based on hundredth day. We tend to use hundredth day because it's the most stable data point, right? It's one of the ones that drives funding. It's at ADE. It's an important data point. If you look to that far right column, percent capacity, that is the most important component of this slide. So what we do is we take that hundredth day enrollment, we look at the capacity, you can see the difference, and then we divide those out and create the capacity. Shumway on the bottom there is at the highest capacity of 67%. With the exception of Frye and Sanborn, all of other schools are at or below 50%. What this indicates to us is that this school has space in their buildings that can be This is some data regarding open enrollment and where students are attending their school. So let's just use Bellona as an example. So 293 students that live in the Bellona Boundary are attending Bellona. 271 students who live in the Bellona Boundary are attending another school in the district. Okay, that yields us, if you add those, 564 potential students in the Boundary of Bellona that we know of, right? Because we have their enrollment data, which gives them a 52% attendance of students in the Boundary at Bellona. The other important piece about enrollment data is we have to capture what students are coming into Bellona's Boundary that are not from Bellona's Boundary. So that open enrollment in district, that second to the last column on the right, says we get 130 students attending Bellona that are not in Bellona's Boundary, and we get 25 students out of the district attending Bellona. It's important to know where our students are coming and going to help with, right, a repurposing.
Dr. Fletcher, just a real quick clarification as you're going through your slides. So with the open enrollment attending another CUSD school, it's because we're a district of choice and have provided so many choices, so many of our kids are going to a program whose parents prescribed that, or they might be going to a program because they qualified for gifted elsewhere.
Yep.
Or specialized service and special education. So there, there's many ways that choices can be impacting that number. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And it's not a negative on Bellona, right?
Great. And for individuals in the audience who may be seeing data for the first time and going, oh, my gosh, what are they doing with the rest of that school?
Right.
So when we have a 50% capacity, other programs are placed there, so they have classrooms being used for specialized, specialized classrooms, preschools. We've even gone down to three-year-olds in some cases, correct?
Correct.
So we bring those programs. So your capacity number is if we put 24 to one in every single classroom versus a six to one specialized?
Correct.
Program? Okay, thank you.
This slide is using the demographers report that Mr. Schluter was mentioning. So this slide is a projection based on, right, building, the demographer reviews, buildings that are happening, birth rates, right? All of that analysis, is it a generational district, neighborhood, to determine what the projections are. If you look at this slide in detail, you'll notice there's not really any consistent trends across our schools, with the exception of by 2030-31, everyone will be at a decline except for Galveston, right? So that's where it's important to note when we make decisions, we need to evaluate what is the best use of our space and our resources and our people. All right. Bear with me, there's a lot of data on this slide. This is a sample data sheet. You actually have the attachment to all of the schools' data sheets. This is the data that will be shared with the committee, and then they will also be requested if there's other data they'd like to bring in for their story, to tell their narrative. So I'm just going to really quickly walk us through what this data sheet looks like. On the top left, we're using Hull tonight, and then there's their mascot. In the middle of that top is our student capacity. How we do that, the formula, is the number of classrooms times 24 students, and then we have the square footage of their buildings on site. If you go down to kind of that next row, we have hundredth day enrollment data, historical and present as of last year. We haven't gotten to the hundredth day yet for '22-'23, so that's why the last data point you see is '21-'22. After, you'll see at Hull's data in 1617, 1718, 1819, 1920, you'll see a slash. The numbers after the slash are preschool, pre-K numbers. So we do separate those out because they're reported differently to the state and they're handled differently for capacity. In the middle top row there, that demographers report is again a projection of their enrollment. And then on the far right in that second row is the enrollment percent change. There is a formula there, that number of new students and the number of withdrawn students, and divided by the hundredth day population. Again, as Mr. Schluter noted, you'll see 2020-2021 has a higher percentage because of COVID. That third kind of row is our facilities data, so they can see what is the year it opened, site acreage, the number of classrooms, if there are specialty classrooms and portables. Then you'll see the historical data by grade. And then on the right, you see the 2021 demographers report, attendance versus residence. So at Hull, we had 548 students attend last year, and based on the demographers report, which uses census data, they anticipated that there were 739 students residing in that Boundary. On the bottom, you'll see the schools that are in proximity, the name and the location of how far they are away from that current school, because if we make changes, we have to be cognizant of how that impacts our students and our parents, transportation, all of that. They'll see the overall projected loss or gain, again, from the demographers report, and then the capacity, which is based on the number of classrooms and the number of students and what level of capacity they're at, so how much space is available for additional options.
May I ask a question on, on that? As we, as we're looking at the enrollment, enrollment percent change, so is that, for, let's look at 19, 1920 school year, that's a decrease of 27% from the previous year?
It's like a, it's like a mobility percentage, a mobility rate. So 27% of the student population was mobile, so coming in and leaving in that current year.
Okay, it's, but it's not that we lost 27% of the students.
No.
Okay, so I, I...
It includes both that we gained, right? The new students that were in and the number that were withdrawn.
Okay. Is there any way that we can make that a little clearer on the slides?
Absolutely.
Because I think enrollment changed, to me, I was looking at it as, oh, we decreased 27% that year, and then we decreased 42%, and then we decreased 39% rather than it being a mobility?
Yep.
Issue. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Mr. Schluter's going to speak to next steps.
Thanks, Dr. Fletcher. So upon finalizing our committee work in mid-October, there's some next steps, and I spoke to you a little bit about this, that we know we need to review again. Of course, we're going to come back to you on November 16th with, so we can share with you the depth and the breadth of the committee work that we engaged in, so you'll have that piece. And then, of course, we know that we're going to have to, we're going to need some more feedback from selected sites, okay? Those dates are to be, are to be determined based on decisions that are, future decisions that are made after our November 16th meeting, okay? So we'll, we'll identify those, those dates and, and communicate them out as well. I think the key with this and our, and our follow-up meetings is that we recognize, as Mrs. Anguiano said, the importance of engaging all of our community stakeholders and our, and our school stakeholders in this process. They are going to play a very key, important role as we move forward, okay, in, in this entire process. So I want to, I want to kind of end where we started, which is to recap again those five major goals and outcomes of this committee work. Again, as we said, it's to identify space, to maintain the strong CUSD choice that we have in this district, to maximize those district resources as we, we act fiscally responsible with the resources we have. It's again to look at those capture rates, to continually monitor those capture rates and proactively address them in the decisions and the actions we take. And then one of those actions, as well as to identify potential sites for possible That ends our presentation. Would open it to Madam President, any members of the board that may have questions.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all the work that's gone in.
We appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I also appreciate the additional attachments that you have on the board packet to allow us to really look at some of the data that you'll be sharing with the committee. Do we have any questions? Why don't I start with Mr. Olive?
Okay. So earlier this week, we were emailing back and forth, you and I and Frank, and kicking around ideas that I had about some things that could be done, and all these dual-language gifted CTA, IB, TOPS, and all that are all different things that could be done at a school. But it kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to me if we have a committee of five people from, you know, picked out of a hat, that are going to say, okay, we're going to do something to this school or that school, before we go out to parents and community members and see what different people in different parts of the community may want. Are we planning on going out to parents or going out to, you know, and saying, what kind of programs would you like to have? Would you like to have TOPS program? Would you like to have dual enrollment or...
So, Mr. Olive, I can answer that, Mr. Schleter. We've done interest inventories across the district, and we'll do another one. Performing arts is an area that is a valued area in our community. They've mentioned that before. So we usually get an interest base from the community of what they want to do. But we're at a point with the demographers report that it may not be about programmatic changes at the site. It may just be that that site is ready to be repurposed for something else in the district. We see that with our programs that we have right now, we're already moving kids around in the district, and so, and the sites have been impacted by that a bit, too. So creating another program that's similar, that just moves the same kids, isn't going to be beneficial, because it's just moving the same number of kids into different locations. Now then, you'll have two or three sites that are possibly looking at repurposing. So the repurposing could be a program. It could definitely be. And that would be, this information that's shared with the committee and the depth of it, is one of the programs that could bring additional enrollments, maybe even some open enrollments to the campus. And like Leo and Heather had said, we've done that with a lot of our campuses. But some of our programs, we've put programming in that was of interest and it wasn't successful, or it was oversaturated, or it wasn't of interest to the parent, and then you're back at square one. So we had looked at, for example, we took some information about one of our schools, and we've looked at early childhood possibly, and then we found the pattern of that school, people weren't signing up for it. So again, trying to hit that square peg in round hole kind of thing. It was just great idea, possibly add to it, but it wasn't getting the results. So what we want to do is interest inventory for programmatic change, and if a school is ready for programmatic change, then we do that interest inventory to see what they're looking at and what that community would support to keep that capture rate.
Okay. And the other part of my question was going to be, particularly in like our downtown area, a lot of those campuses are, the physical building itself is just really, really old. I mean, it would be great to have, you know, if you were going to repurpose something, to build something that's modern and new and has good security and good energy efficiency and all that, is that part of the process?
I think that's probably, that's part of an overall capital plan that would be, that's kind of the, an offshoot of, or a part of the repurposing piece, that'll come out of the repurposing piece. But certainly, that would be part of an overall capital plan that'll be looked at as we identify sites.
And we have that included in the board priorities. You've made it a priority for us to look at those older campuses. We want to make sure they have good capture rate to create that form versus function so that we can get in there and build something that actually meets the needs of that community. May look a little different because that community's needs are a little different. And so that's going to be a part of it, but we wanted to start first with what is at the building, what's there, what's around it, so that we can get some ideas of what we do with it. Do we add an existing program? Do we beef up a program? Or do we rebuild? And then we would come back to you with that with our capital plan. We have two very older, I wouldn't say very old, I'm sure there's buildings that are older somewhere in the nation.
They're all pretty well-maintained, but still, they've just been there a while.
As Tom Dunn's in the back there, I just want to let you know, you're doing a great job on the maintenance of our buildings. We have some older buildings that do reside. Hartford's one of them, Galveston's another one.
They're all about 70 years old.
Yeah. And we have some older buildings that are, we put some additional funds in, and they're interior buildings, and they're probably good for moving forward. But we probably want to look at a couple of buildings like that for rebuilding, not repurposing, but rebuilding, but maybe that building meets that community's needs, that function is a little bit different than just dropping a building that we think could be built there.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to go with Lindsay next. Ms. Love?
So my question is about like the committee formulation, and I feel like you guys knew that I was going to ask this, but I know how we're picking the committees, but are we cognizant of like who's showing up and what the demographic data is there? Just because I always feel that when we make committees, so I've been on some of the committees myself, I see who shows up, and it's always the people who are like yes people. But then I'm also wondering about the people who aren't there and who may have an issue or, you know, demographically what's going on in terms of like, you know, are we getting Spanish speakers, or, you know, are we getting like Hispanic families, right, versus white families in a certain area? So are we cognizant of that as we're putting together these committees?
Yes, hopefully, yes. So when we worked with the principals and asked them to identify their site representatives, we had asked them to be cognizant of that and pick representatives that really were going to represent their community and represent both sides. And then that's why we want to have that opportunity as well, of what other information do they want us to gather? Because if we need to have a third meeting, we have that flexibility built in, but we strongly encouraged our principals, when they selected their committee, to make sure that it was representative of the community. Working with eight schools, we did have to limit the size of the committee, so, you know, I think there could be some argument of, is it representative or not? But that was our challenge to the principals, because we want to make sure it is going to impact, and that went back to the part of giving schools an opportunity to tell their school story. So what I envisioned in our discussions is after our first meeting, they're going to give us additional asks that we're going to gather data on, but then we're going to ask them to go out and gather information from their neighbor, their barbecue, to go out to the greater community to get some feedback. Just, we don't want anybody to be surprised, and I think it's really important that the community is aware, the community is involved, and we have that. So I don't know if that really answers, but our ask to the principals was try to find committee members that are representative of your school. Fortunately, I'm bilingual, so I'll be there to fill that Spanish piece for our Spanish-speaking parents. So does that answer your question?
That does. Thank you.
All right.
And I think it's an important question, Mr. Schleter, so that, I mean, I don't want to gloss over it. That, having the representation there is going to help those individuals get the information from the community. And so when you have that list, I'm sure you're going to look over it, make sure that there's a circle of influence out there that's connected to the community. It may not be the PTO president, it may not be the booster, it may be somebody that has voice in the community, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And I can share specifically, Ms. Love, that that was a concern addressed by a couple principals, because we have a couple Hispanic members on the committee that speak Spanish, and they wanted to make sure there was translation, and should we have those members on the committee? And I said, absolutely. Translation services will be provided. We want them to be a part of that committee, okay? So definitely, we've looked at the representation. We have a representation of males versus females as well, and what our principals believe are key committee members who, while they have a historical knowledge in some cases of the campus, because they've been, they know not just the campus, but they know the community in and around them as well, which I think is important. It's not just about, you know, did I have a student who was in fifth and sixth grade there, but did we have students who have come up the ranks through Hull Elementary or Navarette? And am I, not connected, but do I have a sense of the community and what's going to play out and be important in the community as well?
Joel, or Mr. Worth?
Couple things. Over the 40 years that I've been here, I've watched us do renovations to some degree. We had no choice, because that's how much funding we had. But at the end of the day, they were pretty much a waste of money, and that's where I, especially in those older campuses, hopefully, we're not going to try to go down the renovation road, especially with three that we mentioned. They need to be replaced. And they need to be replaced for those communities as well. So hopefully, I think another committee's working on that, so. Also, I'm very frustrated in that, you know, I've been here, like I said, 40 years, and there hasn't been a marketing campaign. It didn't exist. Now, when we were growing, we didn't really need it. Well, last 10 years, we did, and I'm really frustrated with the previous administration, not now, that we're so far behind the curve, it hurt us, and I see the declines that I see there. Some of those, yes, are aging and so forth, but not all of it by any means. And our competition is saying how great they are, and I'm not sure we're saying how great we are. So I just want to encourage us to make sure we put the resources towards telling our story.
Mr. Worth, I was on a, I'm sorry, a Teams meeting today with three of our surrounding superintendents. We were talking with Gilbert Chamber, and I think they know it. And I think Stephanie Engersall coming in and working the last couple of years, that marketing plan is starting to become more impactful, and the communication plan, and we're going to bring that to the board coming up at the planning session as well. But we have been working on that diligently and also bringing people in to help with that, because that is a directive of the board, is to make sure our communication plans are strengthened, and also our marketing plan is coherent, so that we have a marketing firms as well as our team that are out there and voicing our successes as well as things that we need to change as well. So those things are loud and clear, and I know my staff knows it, and so we actually put a lot of support in that area to make sure we augment in that area.
Ms. Spooner, did you have any questions or comments?
Thanks. So I appreciate the other questions. I kind of wanted a little more information on who was participating as well. But I still do have a question. So when this committee is finished, what exactly will we be receiving? Are we just getting the names of two schools that need to be repurposed? And if it's more than that, what kind of resources is the committee going to be given to have a whole bunch of options to pick from of what those repurposing choices are?
Ms. Schleter, if I can just answer that piece, because I've done this before, and we're not there yet. This is the beginning. So what happens is, we will come back to you with all of the data, all of the information. You will get all of the feedback. We've never kept feedback from the board. So you will get all the feedback that comes up from committees, but that also comes from the school sites as well. With that, we'll take that information, and of course, we'll make a series of recommendations. And we'll also attach value to those, too, so that you have all the information for those recommendations. Then it's going out to our committee work, which would be working with our community so they understand that and taking any questions they have. Then we'll come back to you again and say, here's the larger group feedback from the areas that are impacted. So we narrow it down to the areas that are impacted. For programmatic needs, we'll have a little more time to work on. But if there's anything else that we give as an option that you want to do, and suppose it's building needs, then we've got to select dates that those are impacted by, locations that school attendance might be available to, along with the open enrollment. So that will come at the end. So there's going to be many times that this committee comes back to you with information. The first one will be from the committee, and then we'll go back out and do the community pieces, and then come back with that with the final recommendations. So the optional recommendations will come first, and then we'll come back with final recommendations after we get the community input around those specific schools that are in discussion. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess I'm wondering if it would be possible for there to be some kind of structure available to the two representatives of staff and of parents or community members, that maybe there would be, you know, a way for people to put comments in for them? Because they may, as much as they may be connected into the community, they're probably not connected to every single member of the community. I think it might be helpful to have, you know, some simple way, just like we have public comments online, that they could add comments from each site, from the staff and from the community members, to help give information both to the two representatives of those two groups for each site, but also just for the entire committee.
Does that look, Ms. Spooner, is that just a way to capture, to capture the essence of the community thought at the time it's occurring?
I don't know, you know, exactly what that would look like, but some format that would be, you know, simple and not too onerous on you guys to create, where they could just put in their different comments, because there's no way we're going to reach everyone, and I'd really like to try to include everyone's thoughts and ideas.
Well, we can certainly look at platforms and protocols that we can have in place, like you said, some structures that we can provide as opportunities for, because we know one of the key components is not that we do this meeting and the representatives go back and keep that information to themselves. We want to gather a wider audience from these representatives. So if it takes a certain structure, we can certainly look at some of those pieces that we can provide as opportunities.
Thank you. Joel?
Yes, so our past school boards and past superintendent have done a wonderful job managing our assets. So we have resources to do this correctly. So there's no reason in the world that we don't put all the resources towards the repurposing necessary. There is, we have sufficient funds to take care of that.
We have individuals in the community who either don't yet have students at any of these schools, but will have a vested interest in this. They may only have a two-year-old at this point. And we also have other individuals within the community that really are not involved so much with the schools, or their children maybe are a little bit older or whatever. And how are we going to reach those individuals that don't have a link or a connection to the school? And do we value, do we want to hear from the outside community? I think we should, but...
Sure. I mean, those are key stakeholders. We'll have to look at an opportunity where we can, like, just similar to a platform for collecting information from those who may not, who are not sitting in the room at the time, is what platform or protocol do we have in place to capture the community outside of those who attend currently? Much like those who may have left, and we'd like to have come back as well, if you're not intimately a part of a Chandler school or connected to a Chandler school.
And we possibly could do what we've done before, Ms. Schleter. On our communications website, we can create a space there. That would be for just collecting of information, so that information can go to our webmaster, so we can make that very clear, that if people want to weigh in on that, they can give us their feedback. So we'd probably look at creating a space that's under repurposing, and all these slides would go under it, and it would be available and transparent to the public, and then also where they can communicate in English or Spanish. And we put everything up in English or Spanish, or they can receive it in another language as well.
Do we have any other board comments or questions? Do you have any additional information that you would like to share with us?
We don't at this time, but we look forward to engaging in the committee meetings and coming back to you on November 16th. And obviously, any information, further information that you may have that we can provide you, we'd be happy to do so, outside of the attachments that we've already given you.
And do you expect this to pretty much last most of the rest of this calendar year or the rest of the school year as this moves forward?
Well, you know, our committee work, our committee work is September, October. Our goal is to have that original feedback back to you on the November 16th. And then, Madam President, from November 16th moving forward, we're going to take some direction and determine how we go. We have dates to be determined. I don't want to speak out of turn, because I want to make sure that our committee, I mean, decisions aren't made yet at all, so, and our committee input is going to be vital. So, but we know that we will have captured that original committee work prior to November so that we can come back to you on the November 16th meeting, and then we can make some decisions and ideas further in terms of what other future meetings will be needed.
Thank you.
The goal is to collect as much as we can before the end of the semester.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then move on from there. All right. Well, thank you very much, and I also appreciate any of the volunteers that do join the committee, and I know it's going to be a lot of work for everyone, and we appreciate everyone who's involved with it. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next study session is on mental and behavioral health updates. Dr. Craig Gilbert, our Associate Superintendent of Pre-K through 12 Educational Services, Brenda Vargas, Director for Counseling and Social Services, and Natasha Davis, Prevention Coordinator, will provide an update on mental and behavioral health services. Dr. Gilbert?
Madam President and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to share this update with you as it relates to mental health services and supports. Thank you for introducing my two teammates that are going to be presenting to you today. One thing I would like to share, though, with Natasha Davis, Ms. Davis's position as a prevention coordinator... One thing I would like to share though with Natasha Davis, Ms. Davis's position as a prevention coordinator. This is a new position to us this year. This is something over the years that we have been adding more positions at the district level in order to support what we know is an important topic within our district. I think it's important to know, the vision of the COSD Counseling and, and Social Service Department is to help develop and sustain a caring school environment that promotes respect, reflection, problem-solving, social responsibility, and healthy, and healthy relationships. Our vision is to provide a proactive and responsive support program that ensures all students understand and embrace their own values through a positive mindset of belonging and connection with one another. In today's society, we know that our students are struggling. They have stresses that are coming from inside school, outside school, social media, you name it, the pressures that are coming. Then you throw COVID in, and I've been trying not to use that word all year. But it, it is something that's there, and what did that do? It exacerbated what was already there, and it brought it more to the surface. And so that is something that I have to commend our, all of our counseling and social work team within the district, because they are the front line working with our students and our staff, you know, as we, as we are moving, moving through. So with that, I want our students to know that we see you and we do hear you. We have been taking all of this information in to look to see what can we do. One thing that's real important to understand, and this is not, not to be excused, we are a big ship. In order for us to move forward on the things that we're doing with the number of students over forty, forty-three thousand plus students in, in a community over eighty square miles, we want to make sure that we're looking at what we're doing, and it's something that we can, we can sustain. So students, understand, we do hear you, we do see you. And for our students, and I know they're not here tonight, they, they may be here later, I appreciate that they're sharing their story. One of the things that I, I always bring up to the team is that, you know, there's a lot of things that happen in our community, and the school is a part of it. Whether we're supporting, whether we're on the front line, whether we're, you know, trying to support a family outside or inside the school. But I think one thing that's real important is that it's not our story to tell, right? It's for us to come alongside, us to come and support, us to be there and make sure that we have supports in place. But we also have to be careful at the same time that many times it's not our story to tell unless we're allowed to do so. So it's real important as we look at that. So when we look at our presentation today, looks very simple, it's not though, right? Well, what, what we really want to do and our hope in this presentation is to give you a glimpse of what we have been doing to address mental health within the district. What we're current, what we have currently in process, and where we plan to go. We will look at the staffing, how we're staffed and what we're doing from that perspective. What have we focused on over the last four to five years? Starting with five years ago, I believe this is your fifth year in this role where we did not have a Director of Counseling and Social Services. I had asked at that time in order to add that position, because we knew we needed it, and we've been trying to increase our staff in that area since. Look at available resources and trainings that we have within our district and those that we, we want to bring in. And also focus on moving forward. What does that look like? Who needs to be involved? How are we going to structure that? That becomes real important. We have a lot of information. So with that, Madam President, I would, with your permission, I would ask that we were able to go through the presentation, because we want to make sure that we give you the full perspective of it, and then maybe take questions at the end, if that's okay.
That's great, great plan.
Thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Vargas.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent in our duty, guests. I want to take some time to take a look at this slide and identifying the people that are boots on the ground, that are all master's level trained professionals, that support our students and our families. This is a breakdown of who we have at the site, thank you, in every single one of the roles. This includes about eighteen licensed associate and clinical mental health professionals. I cannot state and emphasize enough that our most valuable asset are our people. We work in tandem in these collaborative roles that complement one another, and this is very unique to Chandler Unified School District. These roles have to navigate multiple responsibilities while still honoring and serving students first. Our district roles, each individual on our team, here next to me and behind me, have either been a school counselor or a social worker at some point. We focus on macro level programming that includes curriculum, protocols, training, education for all stakeholders, increased community partnerships, staffing of cases. Our school counselors focus on academic, personal, social, and career development. While our social workers focus on basic needs, such as Maslow's hierarchy of needs, school community connection, and they're true experts in the mental health profession. We have a strong collaboration with other professionals in our districts, such as school psychologists, as well as our registered nurses. Our standard of practice and expectations are higher than most. As we may be doing a suicide assessment, we might be creating a support plan for a student while teaching them coping skills or supporting them with some challenges in the classroom or outside the classroom. And most importantly, helping them identify ways that they can look forward for the future. Our school counselors and social workers manage crisis situations and meet individual needs of students and their families. We create comprehensive counseling and social work programs based on data, ultimately focused on reducing the achievement gap and increasing wellness. We are anchored in what students need through direct and indirect feedback through, from students. However, we are also here for staff. We provide education and wellness initiatives. And as you can see, the breakdown across our district, we're close to about a hundred counselors strong. The increase in social workers I want to share in our next slide is due to additional funding in which our district chose to apply to the Arizona Department of Education School Safety Grant. Part of including, and this also includes school resource officers. This application took quite a bit of time, took quite a bit of research and data collection in order for us to be able to apply. In the first year, we were awarded two allocations for social workers. And then in the second year, we were awarded the other nine, and that it also includes a school counselor. Not every school district applied for this grant, and we couldn't have done it by ourselves. It took the help and support of the principals and the school counselors collectively in order to take a look at that data, to identify the needs that we had in order to be able to really state and mirror the, the great needs. And the majority of these schools are title schools, by the way. We've done a lot in the last few years, as Dr. Gilbert mentioned. Since the inception of our department, the school district, and at the time, Dr. Casille was very intentional. From the very inception of our department, we sought out experts for advisement. We really, and this is not linear, by the way, it's not like number one happened first. This is all kind of happened collectively. We just want to identify our focus points. We wanted to establish protocols and practices that were rooted in evidence, especially when responding to crisis. We took a great deal of time researching and assessing practices and curriculum and what other folks were doing, not just within our state, but even in other states. We put a lot of resources into staff training and student deliverables, which you have a sample of our student wellness initiative as an example. You also will find in that a colored example on the third sheet is from the Suicide Prevention Resource Center. When we did start in collecting all the puzzle pieces, as you can see, it's a puzzle piece, the different areas that we looked at as far as research. We knew we had increased community partnerships, local and nonprofit rooted in helping families. We had to collaborate and really pivot during COVID. We had to expand our resources. We had to meet the needs as we became aware of what was happening and what families were making us aware of. We worked collectively with food and nutrition and transportation to deliver food boxes to the door, as well as pivoting to support the thousands of students and families that chose to go online. And we had limited staff, and we were, we were building the plane as we flew it. Our next steps as we continue to create this continuum of care, especially as it pertains to suicide prevention and awareness, we will continue to stay rooted in evidence-based practices by threading community partnerships to further address the continuum of care needs for students and their families. We serve not just the kids in our classroom, but their families as well. Because when our, when our, when our families are okay, our students seem to be better. We want to expand parent engagement pieces to include a menu for all. Working in tandem with our communication department to inform all stakeholders of what we are doing. We sometimes keep our nose to the ground into the work, and we forget to share what it is that we are doing to make sure folks know. We have a lot of big-hearted people in our community. When we have been contacted by meaningful folks, by folks that really mean well, we have to take a step back and really assess what do our students need, and is it rooted in evidence and best practices? In an educational setting, we have bigger hearts than our hands can reach. Our hearts and our emotions can impact our decision-making, and we have to move cautiously because we are responsible for every single student experience. It is for those reasons why we do not practice having a memorial or a vigil on the heels of a suicide, because that is not best practice. Especially for those students that survive. We do not want to perpetuate and increase that loss. But we also want to honor and respect the families that do have that loss.
So with that being said, I think it's important to look at some of the legislation. There has been recent legislation that has assisted us and guided, that helped guide us as we look the direction we're going. Senate Bill 1468 was signed in 2019, and our very own Mrs. Vargas represented COSD when she spoke in support of this bill at the state Capitol. This is not something out of the ordinary for COSD to be involved in looking at legislation that moves forward in order to help our families and to help our students. With that being said, the focus of this bill was staff training regarding suicide prevention. And it was required for the, the staff members that are in grades six through 12. The requirement was awareness and prevention training for school counselors, for teachers, for principals, again, for, for, and it was specific to grades six through 12. It was to identify warning signs, intervention and referral techniques, as well as, as was stated, evidence-based. That was part of what the legislation required. Because of this importance of ensuring that all of our staff had this information, COSD didn't stay with just teachers and staff members that were in grades six through 12. We trained all of our staff. When I say all, I mean all. So with that, it's important that, to know that we are always trying to make sure that what is the best for our students? What is the best for our staff? How can we make sure that we're putting all the information needed into the hands of those that are working with our students every day? We also have Senate Bill 1376, and that was passed in 2021. That focus was on mental health instruction to be included in health education. Ms. Vargas worked very close with Dr. Edgar and looked at this legislation to make sure that we were, one, in compliance and moving forward with what was in legislation. And it really looked at incorporating multiple dimensions of, of health, such as social and emotional learning. It was, and it was also specific to attitudes and behaviors that promote health and well-being. With COSD, as we normally do, even though this was passed in 2021, this was already a focus, focus of ours in 2018. So when this came out as legislation, it was something we were already doing. We just enhanced any other pieces that we may not have had implemented yet, and we moved forward with it. So there is legislation that is always, that is also part of some of the things that is helping us in the direction that we are going.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Part of our comprehensive district-wide focus on mental health awareness and mental well-being really includes cultivating and sustaining partnerships with county and state agencies, our local nonprofits, community organizations, so that they can really help provide that continuum of care and service to our students and their families, right? And we know that it often takes collaboration to not only provide mental health services, but to also remove barriers to learning that may include meeting the basic needs of our students by supporting their families as well. Partnerships we've developed have really helped us to provide services both in and out of school with, to our students with the most significant needs. You know, we, we're able to help students and families with a wide range of services. So that can include food and housing security, rent and utility assistance, clothing, diapers, formula, glasses and dental care free of charge. We can also help families apply for guardianship, Medicaid services, social security, right? Which provides them with financial resources and healthcare. Because we understand that such social determinants impact a student's ability to be successful. By ensuring the foundation of that family, we can work together to support the overall well-being of our student. We know when families connect with agencies that we have MOUs with, so for example, Southwest Behavioral Health Services, Teen Lifeline, Not My Kid. We know when they connect, it leads to positive outcomes. So for example, students that may participate in counseling services provided by Southwest Behavioral Health are much more likely to reengage, not, reengage not only socially, but also academically in productive ways. There, I, I think there's no singular approach that can universally meet the needs of all of our students. So, so we look for ways to continue to expand that bank of resources by really networking at a local, regional, and a state level. Our programs and services have been noticed by neighboring districts, and we're sharing that content. So, you know, we can work together to help all students feel valued. You know, I, I really hope as you, as you're listening today, the takeaway that you're hearing is that we are here to help, right? And we know that where there is help, there is hope. In addition to our community partnerships, we're working on fostering a culture of support for our students by increasing their knowledge and protective factors, increasing their self-awareness, and, and increasing their sense of connectedness through what I like to call scaffolding. For example, so students who are interested in connecting with their peers can participate in these mental health awareness clubs, where they recognize that they're not alone in how they're feeling. They learn that asking for help is really an act of strength, not an act of shame. You know, at our high schools, these mental health awareness clubs might be called something different at each site. For, for example, at Perry, it's called Pumas for Pumas. At Hamilton, it's called Hope for Huskies. But all of these clubs are based off of the Bring Change to Mind program. And, and that, that program is really a platform for students to use their voice. That's what it's about. We've, we've already begun to identify similar programs that would be developmentally appropriate for our junior high students with the intention of providing greater supports for this age group. In the past week alone, I, we've vetted Hope Squad, Ending the Silence, Sources of Strength. All of the programs really focus on de-stigmatizing mental illness, strengthening those protective factors, and really knowing when to seek help, especially in regards to thoughts of suicide. Our mental health scaffolding also includes small support groups that are led by our counselors and our social workers for students who need more targeted interventions. During those group sessions, students can really learn ways to regulate their emotions, manage channels. to regulate their emotions, manage challenges, take action that's really going to lead to healthy choices and healthy outcomes. An additional level of scaffolding we're adding is, as Mr. Narducci's message on mental health awareness so beautifully stated is, this year we'll really be engaging with students in roundtable discussions this year to create opportunities for dialogue, that what, dialogue and discourse that will lead to enhanced practices and services that our students are wanting and needing and deserving of. So a big part of our purpose is to provide and deliver programs that de-stigmatize mental health issues. And by shining a light on those issues, we're really increasing the mental health literacy of all of our students. This slide lists a multitude of lessons and curriculums that are scaffolded across all grade levels. And I'm just going to speak about a few of them so you can kind of get an idea of their purpose. Because I know sometimes in education, it feels a little bit like alphabet soup. So for example, at the K six level, those prevention lessons are delivered by our school counselors. And those prevention lessons can include things like self-esteem, problem-solving, managing big emotions, identifying feelings, kindness. In those transition years, we were really intentional about selecting signs of suicide. It's an evidence-based program where students learn how to act, where they really learn how to acknowledge those warning signs of depression and suicide. They learn how to tell the individual that they're concerned about, that they care about them. And then they connect them to a trusted adult. We've also partnered with ASU Counseling Center and Educational Outreach and Student Services Team, it's a mouthful, to begin implementation of a mental health toolkit that they have developed. So that's at our high school level. That peer-to-peer toolkit prepares high school students to be effective helpers and leaders in their school by creating and strengthening those mental health prevention programs. So you can see just different things at different levels. In addition to the mental health awareness education that we provide for students, we also provide ongoing training for CUSD staff. As Dr. Gilbert noted earlier, CUSD really goes above and beyond that state requirement by having all staff support and certified complete suicide prevention training every single year. We've really also committed ourselves to using experts and evidence-based practices to offer additional trainings to our staff to kind of fine-tune their noticing skills and so they can more readily identify and respond to those students who are in need of assistance. Currently, we've trained 800-plus staff and community members in Youth Mental Health First Aid. For those of you that don't know, Youth Mental Health First Aid is a six-hour course and it's designed to teach caregivers how to help youth who are experiencing a mental health challenge or a crisis. And they do this through direct action. So you learn about that direct action. We're super excited to share that Youth Mental Health First Aid is going to be offered as a 301 professional development class option starting this school year. Additionally, we've also trained 700-plus support staff members in Safe Talk. Safe Talk is a three-hour course that teaches participants how to ask directly about suicide and then help to connect them with somebody who can provide additional support. We were really intentional about training those support staff members, which included bus drivers, health assistants, administrative assistants, before and after-care workers, paraprofessionals, since they have that direct and daily contact with our students. For school-based mental health professionals, and when I say school-based mental health professionals, I'm talking about our school counselors, our school social workers, as well as our psychologists. We ask that they complete applied suicide intervention skills training. There will not be a quiz later, which we refer to as ASSIST. We've trained approximately 150 school-based mental health professionals and we continue to offer this every year as we onboard new individuals into those roles. ASSIST is a two-day course that teaches suicide first aid intervention, how to develop a personalized support plan to keep safe for now and how to connect those individuals with further help. I think it's really important to note that and highlight that we wouldn't have been able to do any of this or offer any of these trainings, sustain any of these trainings without our partnership with Mercy Care. They paid for us to be trained. They paid for trainers of trainers. They paid for additional resources. So again, circling back around to how important those, really those partnerships are, right? This is just, you know, it's a brief overview of some of the resources and services within CUSD that are really creating and sustaining this momentum of focus on mental health awareness and mental well-being through our community partnerships, through our student supports and through our staff training.
So we've been kind of busy. However, we stay busy, it keeps us grounded on what kids need. This page really focuses on resources. This is not an exhaustive list. I just want to point out a few things as to kind of what direction we've gone in and we continue to assess in order to continue to determine whether or not what we're doing for families and community is actually hitting home. When we first started four years ago, this department, we would do this listen and learn where we would invite the community and parents out to come to an event and learn about a particular topic. We quickly realized that families are busy. Families may not have the time and they're trying to juggle family life, right? So, and they may as well work. So we decided that the best way, let's continue to have some options for families, but also let's have an option where we can have easy access to information. Because a lot of the topics that we talk about, there's a lot of stigma. It's very sensitive. And sometimes, right, maybe you don't want to be seen. Maybe you don't want anyone to know. And for us, the priority is that families get the information. So we started our CUSD CARES podcast. And that was something that was a little bit of a risk because we had no idea what we were doing, to be very honest with you. We decided to give it a shot. And it took some speed. We also added, in the last school year, we started to include our Spanish-speaking families and we have CUSD charlas. And for those of you that don't speak Spanish, to represent the needs of our Spanish-speaking community because Spanish is my first language. So in adding all of these different topics, they're in a bank on our website and they're available also on Spotify for free to anyone. And we share this very readily with our East Valley school districts. We also want to continuously to engage students and inform them as well as families in regards to the helplines. The helplines really encourage help-seeking behaviors. As Natasha noted, we don't want it to be in any way a sign of something negative that they can't ask for help. It's actually a sign of strength. So, because we can't do it alone and we need to ask for help. In addition to some of these other resources that we have, we have a district resource guide that's over 50 pages long. Now, while I understand that in a moment of crisis, no one's going to go to our website, download the 50-page document and look for it. But everyone usually calls a friend or a neighbor or a family. And so we want our community to know that this is available and as you reach out to a helpline, that could be another individual that may be familiar, right? They are categorized in our resource guide. So for easy lookup if necessary. And they're all within our local community, as close as North Chandler, all the way to Queen Creek as well. The other piece that we've been highlighting quite a bit, especially at our secondary level, has been a Friend Ask app. This app is free. It's from the Jason Foundation, which is a big suicide prevention organization. And we want students to have it available at their fingertips. Why? That is the age that they live in. Everything is usually on their mobile device and available for them. It has helpful tips about how to talk to a friend, what to do, where to reach out to, how to even have the conversation. Sometimes in a moment of struggle or crisis, people want to help and they don't know what to say. And they just need the words to start the conversation. And this app gives them the tools to allow to at least begin. We have other resources. One of the things that I wanted to highlight on here, if I can see, are student IDs, as noted per legislation. We do have the helpline information on the back of our secondary sites ID of our students. I think the most important thing to know is our strong partnership with Teen Lifeline. They are rooted in evidence in every single practice of what they do. They're instrumental in making sure that students feel safe. They're a trusted resource. To the point where if they feel a student is unsafe, they will pick up the phone and call us personally in conjunction with police if they feel that a student is so unsafe that they possibly might make an attempt. So our partnerships where we can pick up the cell phone and call somebody, that's how strong our partnerships are with some of these community agencies. We have others such as Gaggle that monitors students' writing to identify some keywords in case there is a concern in either regards to suicide, alcohol, drugs, bullying or any other type of identifying factor that may bring up a red flag for us to follow up with a student and their parent or guardian. We have, like I said, a ton of different other resources, including our virtual com room. But that's just to kind of give you a general idea. And we try to serve all. We're not perfect, but we are continuously assessing to see what else we can do to serve all of our students and their families. This is a sample of what our website currently looks like. Yesterday, we had a listen and learn event with our partners from Solari. Solari is a nonprofit agency that is a provider for the 988. 988 is the new national suicide lifeline in which has been, started July 16th. In addition, on our website, we do have an area to address every single stakeholder, for students, parents and community staff, as well as our boots-on-the-ground folks and the district resource guide. We also have for parents and guardians, an actual calendar for every single month. We start with August, of course, we've been very busy. And identifying other events happening that they can listen and learn as well, whether that's virtually or in person with other community partners like the ones Natasha has already mentioned.
So already quite a mouthful of things are going on. Is there more to do? There is. Because we need to make sure that we look at everything that's available to us as a resource and a support for our families and for our staff. When we look at what's in progress, we can start with, you know, our community health, mental health roundtables. We are planning our community health roundtables currently. We know that this must be a community effort. It's not something that just the district can do. It really needs to be a collective. I know when I was younger, when you were out in your neighborhood and I see it's, it has changed a little bit, but when you're out in the neighborhood, you were everybody's kid. And, and you know, it's, we need to get back to that, making sure that we are a collective, taking care of each other. So representatives that will be involved in this initial is we have members from the city of Chandler, the town of Gilbert, Gilbert Public Schools. We have national experts coming in and also working with us. We're including community partners. But as you can imagine, you know, this group will continue to grow. It's going to get bigger. But to start with, you know, as we embark on this roundtable, it's going to start relatively small and then we're going to grow other resources and other providers and other people that are going to be involved and help us with this. We want to utilize these roundtables to assist services, to assess services and resources available to families and identify the need areas that are in our community. Not just in our district, the needs that are in our community as we're working with our families. This is one of the reasons why we have developed an RFP, which is a request for proposal, that will be released tomorrow. Ms. Vargas and her team really worked quite hard and extensively in order to put this together, to really focus on how we can get more resources and more supports to our families. With the leadership of Mr. Narducci, the district has committed $5.5 million to be used over the next two to three years to increase access and resources, services and supports to our students. And I think it's important to understand where this funding came from. We have been fortunate in the district that we've been receiving Esser monies. But one piece of that that we recently received didn't give a whole lot of time. You can utilize it for mental health and addressing these issues, but the timeframe that they actually gave for us to spend it and come with a sustainable plan was very short. And one of the things that came from that is Mr. Narducci said, "Well, what we need to do is we know that this is a value. We know that we need to make sure that we're getting more resources to our families. How can we do that?" And of course, he worked with Ms. Barry, who is our financial person who knows how we can work through these pieces. And what Mr. Narducci said is, "As we have this money and we can spend it in these areas, we will take that money and it needs to be worked with all the schools and we'll utilize and utilize that money from the district budget so that we can use that same amount of money and we can use it over a longer period of time. We can come with a sustainable plan that makes sense and make sure that we're being fiscally responsible in how we're using these resources." So with that, we will utilize those funds in order to move forward with this RFP to make sure that we can extend more resources and services to our parents.
And I just want to discuss very briefly the RFP, Request for Purchase. Our goal when we wrote the RFP was to expand mental health services and raise the system of care. We understand that maybe we don't have all the other, all the choices at possibly other states. But our goal is to bring hope and healing for students that have suicidal ideation. To reduce the lethal gap because we know families oftentimes are faced with a really tough decision. They have a student in crisis and they have to go to the emergency room. And they're sitting there, sometimes overnight, waiting for hours. And really, it only puts a band-aid. And no disrespect to our health professionals, our medical professionals, they're amazing people doing the best that they can. We, our priority is to reduce the thoughts of suicide with evidence-based treatment. To have immediate appointments that are accessible for all. And no barrier, not even language. Address all students from our northern area to our southern area. Interventions that are effective and have been proven that also help parents, not just students. Being a parent today is a tough job. It is one of the hardest jobs. As a parent myself, everything we know sometimes goes out the window when we have a child in crisis. And we need support. Our goal is to bring hope and healing and to be very strength-based. And to reduce the lethal gap that we know exists.
I guess I'm just going to hit you with more alphabet soup. C-stag, Comprehensive School Threat Assessment. It was determined that the C-stag will actually be the threat assessment that we're going to be utilizing. It's important to note the C-stag was also adopted by the Arizona Department of Education. Currently, we're really preparing for the implementation of and training of the C-stag. That will actually be delivered by the trust. C-stag kind of involves a team at each site and it's up to the site what that team includes. But typically, it is an administrator and then a school-based mental health professional, the SRO, a teacher. It's just, you know, depending on that site. So the trust will deliver that training to us. So the implementation of the junior high clubs to support mental health awareness, that I touched upon that before. We really looked at a number of programs that we're still trying to determine, as I mentioned, just three this week, that we really feel are very solid options that I'm very excited about. And then the implementation of teen mental health first aid. So we're going to pilot this and make this happen this year. Actually, in the first or second week of September, a bunch of us are going through the training to be able to become trainers to deliver and teach teen mental health first aid. I think it's important to note that, you know, you have to be 15 and up to participate in this course. And it requires parent approval as well.
So you'll see some of the things that we have in progress. This is just a few that we wanted to make sure that we shared. During the recent board meetings, and we talked about this a little bit, it's been, you know, made very evident that we need to strengthen our communications with our families. And I agree. families. And I agree. I think sometimes we're so close to it that we think we're doing a good job of communicating, we're not. You know, we know it's happening, or we think it's happening, but we're not getting that information to the people who need it. And so one of the things that we've been, we've been actually talking about, this has been a topic for us, you know, all year, but really rose up in, in, in late May, and we've been having this conversation of how we make sure that we're getting information to those that need it, making sure that we're communicating out to everyone. So with that, we started with our summer communications, that really focused on mental health supports that are available in our community. Ms. Vargas brought up the 988 Listening Webinar, that was yesterday, and that is now already loaded, uploaded on our website, so that it can be viewed anytime, you know, by those in our community. We look at increasing intentional communications to all stakeholders. We look at the community resources and sending that information out to our families. How are we addressing Gaggle? We have a new Director of Safety, and we've been putting more information out as to our director and the things that we're doing as it relates to safety within the district, because this does go hand in hand. When we look at the things that we're, we're seeing our students having to deal with within our schools. Continue, we ask our, our families to please continue to read school and district email communications for parent resources. I will say, we do try and strike a balance. I know that we also get information of, there's too much things being sent out. We are trying to strike a balance. So that's where I think when we look at the, the final one here, and that is, please subscribe to your school or the district websites, so that you can get updates throughout the year. You can make sure that if there's something specific that you want to know about, you can subscribe to that, and, and make sure that you're in the know of the information that is, is going out there. But we will continue to make sure we're sending key information out to our families, so that you know where things, things lie, where, where you need to go to get that information. So when we, when we look at our future focus, it is important to note that our, we want to make sure everybody in our district is well. It's our students, it's our parents, it's our families, it's our employees, it's our staff. You know, this is a tough time for everyone, and I know we, we've focused on some of the things that we're bringing to our students, but, you know, as Ms. Vargas said, we, we have staff that are in need. And, you know, it's, it's going to be that we're trying to take care of everyone, so that everybody can do their part in helping each other. So when we look at our future focus, we want to strengthen student engagement. That student engagement with their teachers, with staff, with counselors, social workers, and with their peers. I think that is an important piece, because it's their peers that they're engaged with all day, every day, whether it's in person, it seems more social media now, but it's, it's the engagement. I, I have to tell you, when it's just a Snapchat is this, and all of a sudden, that's the face, and they know what, it's a whole five or six sentences just from that picture, but they're communicating. And we need to make sure that we are helping them engage with each other, because relationships are key, and students need to know that they're valued, they're heard, they're cared for, and there's a caring adult on that campus that they can connect to when they, when they need help, when they need to talk to someone. We want to ensure access to appropriate resources for the needs of all CUSD, CUSD staff and families. And it's not, again, not just CUSD, it's also looking to, in the community, what is available. We want increasing collaboration with city, state, and community agencies to enhance mental health resources in our community. It is already shared with some of the things that we've been able to do because of the partnerships that we have, and utilizing, you know, a collaborative approach with the resources within our community. This needs to be a community focus. The district has a place and a part to play in making sure that our students are well, but it is a community focus, and it will take a collaborative collective in the community for us to move forward, because we're stronger together, and move, to move the, in the same direction. We're stronger together, and we're weaker apart. So it becomes very important. Growing our community partnerships, this has always been a focus of Chandler. This has always been a focus of Chandler Unified. If you look at the Care Center, the Chandler Care Center, if you look at our libraries, right, the, the community, um...
Partnership.
Yes, I, well, pardon with the city, but I was thinking the CAA. I was trying not to use the alphabet, apologize. We're so used to using that, but then you look at our SROs.
The Arts there.
Yes, the Arts Center. I couldn't think about, I could see it, but I could, but, but when you look at what we're doing with our communities, one of the things that came up earlier is the grants that we put in, put in place for our SROs, for our counselors, for our social workers. And every year, because of us putting that into the, to the state, we've reaped in getting more funding in order to cover the cost of our SROs. We just found out today that once we get paperwork in, we should have four more additional SROs covered, and that's less money coming out of the district budget. That was just today. Now, it's just for this year, but the new cycle will come up, and if we show that we're utilizing our, our resources appropriately, I think it gives us a, a better chance of when we're re-putting in for this grant to get more resources. So we look at how to reach, you know, how, how to reach and connect with supports. You know, we have information all over our schools. When we look at resources of whether it's 911 or 988, Miracle with Crisis Line, Suicide Lifeline, Teen Lifeline, you know, Save Domestic Violence Services, we have information on IDs in our schools, on buses, we're trying to get that information out, and we will continue, continue to do that. So it's important to note, if, if, while you look at this presentation, whether you see it later on, because it was recorded, or you're hearing it later, know that if you need someone, if you need resources or supports, go to your counselor on your, on your campus, go to the social worker on your campus. We may not have the supports you need, but we know who to get you to. And so that's important for us to, for you to know, that there are resources, we just need you to work with us, and I think we need to work as a collective to make sure that we get that to those who need it. Finally, we've seen this slide before, you know, Ms. Vargas just shared this with you as to the things that we focused on over the last five years. There's much more than this. I wanted to make sure that, Ms. Vargas had, could have put much more on here, but I wanted to make sure we could finish this in a reasonable time. So, so with that, you can see, these are some of the key focuses over the last five years that has been happening and occurring in this department. With that, I know that we have just a little bit of time left. We will try to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. We appreciate the update on this, and you guys have really, really been busy, and I know you will continue to be busy as you work towards implementing some of the, the things that are in our future. I guess, I think some board members probably have maybe even extensive questions, but Ms. Love, let's start with you.
Mine are not that extensive. But congratulations also to Natasha for becoming the Prevention Coordinator, and I'd love to hear more about that, but not, not today, that's fine. But I do have a couple of questions. So first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I'm really pleased to see some of the additions that you guys have made. I do have a question, though, and this is just kind of coming from my own background in terms of like, how our counselors and social workers are trained, because, you know, we have to have CEUs. And part of that is having CEUs in ethics and cultural competency. And we know in our field, you can take like the one class that gives you all six of the cultural competency and ethics trainings, but there really is a gap, especially because we've had students who have come in from different groups, like our LGBTQIA community, our BIPOC community, our SPED community, who feel like they're really not being addressed in the microaggressions they're experiencing daily. And so I'm wondering what our trainings look like for our social workers and counselors with regard to addressing that with our students. That wasn't that in depth, I just want to point.
That was a part one, is that what you're saying, Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Love. So we have offered, we tried to collectively make a list so that we could share, and the list was extremely extensive. If you talk to any Boots on the Ground folks, counselors, or social workers that come to our three and a half to four hour training, they will tell you it is jam-packed. So we take every single moment to include cultural competency pieces, addressing marginalized communities, really focusing on what the actual need is. And let me give you a for example. For example, recently, we've seen in the last school year, an increase in refugee students, particularly from Afghanistan and different pockets in Africa. So we have had a greater focus to identify considerations around refugees, working with our federal programs folks, that are able to identify them to get additional funding for services, and the, it's really based on housing where they go, and some of the schools that they are attending usually maybe are not receiving refugee students in the past, so this is something new. So we want to make sure, A, the principal's comfortable, and they understand their leadership role as it pertains to supporting these students and their families, as well as our folks, Boots on the Ground counselors, and social workers. And then what questions are we not asking? How do we make them feel comfortable? How do we ensure that they can access their education, but also feel part of our community, which is vitally important? So that's just a for example. I could probably be here for hours, and about all the multitude of different professional development that we offer, but we do spend quite a bit of our resources on professional development in order to raise the minimum level of expectations among counselors and social workers within our department. And I will add that school psychologists have been saying, "Hey, Brenda, can we come to your training too?" So we've been inviting those folks as well. We just have to be very cautious about making sure we leave folks in the building in case we do have a crisis and students in need.
Yes, somebody's got to be at the wheel, right? Like, my next question would be, and I'll have more questions about that, I'm going to email you, but my next question would be about Gaggle. So I could see how that would be a benefit, right? Like, we definitely want to identify students who may need support, but I can also see how, like, the other side of that, which is criminalizing students, right? And so how are we addressing that, particularly with like, if we're bringing like school resource officers in because something's been flagged, right? Are we addressing it from a punitive approach or an intervention approach?
I, I can start with that. We're looking at it as an intervention approach. You know, when we have something flagged, it could be on a Monday afternoon at noon, it could be on a Friday night at midnight, it could be Sunday at three in the morning. It's monitored to make sure, one, that, that every, everyone is safe. And so whether it's someone who's looking to harm themselves, or saying they're looking to harm someone else, you know, we, we get calls, or I should say, some of our team members get calls, also the principal gets a call, so that we can work with that family and address what is coming from that. If it's something that is, is a safety piece, police are going to be involved if need be, but we're working with the family and making sure we're, we're trying to figure out what is the situation, right? And then we also have to look at, you know, what, what do we need to do next? So our first focus isn't how is it going to be punitive, it's going to be how do we make sure that we either get supports, or we find out what's going on in the situation? Because sometimes when you have that information, it's, it's something that they wrote in a paper, because they're, they're, you know, afraid of something that's going to happen to them, or something that they're looking to do. So it's within their system of, of information in their papers and things that they're writing, but it's not a punitive, it's looking to make sure we have supports.
Okay. And for the interest of time, I just have one question. So I know that we don't participate in candlelight vigils, and that makes sense from the evidence-based standpoint, but the evidence base also suggests that vigils can be effective if they're student and community-led. And so my question is, we've had a number of vigils that have been planned, I think there was one over the summer. Would it not be important, though, for us to have a presence out there, since those are our kids that are attending? Because like, I feel like a few weeks after the one vigil that took place, we do, we did have an incident of suicide, and concerns that I heard from on the ground was, you know, it was really in good faith, but there was nobody to connect kids to when they did become, or, or get to into that crisis state. And, you know, hopefully, we can connect them, you know, ourselves to counselors, or somebody connect them back to us, but it sounds like there was kind of like a gap in communication there. That was it.
More of a comment, I'm guessing?
Yeah, that was, yeah, I just wanted to know, like, if there is any plan in terms of like, if there is something, we can't control what the community plans, but if there is something planned, can we at least have some resources there, or some, a body there, to make sure that our students are okay, and that we're connecting them back to help?
I think that, just to respond to your, to your statement, and I appreciate the comment, we definitely need an increase in communication and dialogue before events like these are planned and, right, put out, in order to put measures in place that are safe. But we also have to ask a tough question as professionals, whether or not is our need as adults, and what do students need? And so in that is where we need to reach out to our community partners, to meet individually or in small group with families, even in homes, right? If that is the need, if that is a particular need. And I think every situation is different, so it's really hard for us to kind of cast a net and say, "We're going to do this for all." We have to look at each situation. Our students are in a cycle of grief, as you know, and they're very vulnerable. And we want to honor and respect the space that they're in, and acknowledge the fact that there is no easy answer. This is a very complicated issue, that we're all trying to make sense of, adults and youth.
Yeah, and I get that. I just want to make sure that if it is being planned, you know, that we have somebody there for the interest of looking out for our kids.
Sure, and I appreciate all the questions, social worker to social worker. But I think that's where those community partnerships can really strengthen, so if the, if parents and whoever makes us aware that's happening, we have things like those MOUs in place with Teen Lifeline, we could pick up the phone and call Teen Lifeline and ask them to have some counselors there, and because of that MOU, they can reach back out to us, you know, at a district level, at a site level, to let us know, "Hey, I spoke to this child when I was at the vigil, I'm concerned," right? So really filling those gaps, and utilizing those community partners to widen our, our safety net, right? And I think, you know, again, the partnerships, that's where we could beef that up.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and as we, if I can just interject here, as we increase those community partners through the RFP, we'll have more resources to be able to do that as well, because they need to get to the people they can help, not, and we need to be the people that can get them to the people that can help.
Right, and I, I think, again, I think we're super fortunate that we have an extensive list of community partnerships, so if Teen Lifeline can't do it, we're calling the next person on the list, right? If that person can't do it, we're calling the next person on the list, so.
Okay. Mr. Olive?
Okay. First, thank you, and, and, you know, your, the work that you guys do is very important, and it's actually kind of hard to measure, because it's hard to say, you know, "Hooray, nothing bad happened today, we did our job." But along that same vein, I have a question about the RFP, the Request for Proposal for Mental Health Services that we're going to do. I'm used to seeing these requests for proposals for services, for construction, for school buses, things that you can measure. How do you measure mental health services?
Great question, and it's a tough one. We have a criteria, kind of the things that I mentioned. We certainly want it to be treatment that is evidence-based. We want to be able to have a turnaround time of four to eight hours, to be able to have appointments for families, whether that's in person and/or through a telehealth type of service. We want to make sure that there is no barrier in regards to language. So there are certain criterias in that RFP, in which we expect that there will be multiple awardees, which means it's not going to be one sole vendor, or a mental health provider. So that will get, allow us to kind of cast a net, and allow us to serve all students and all families, and address all the needs that we have, with the priority of reducing suicide, thoughts of suicide.
So do we get like a certain number of counselors for a certain number of hours per week, or something like that?
Um, not, well, it depends, but not necessarily, right? The services, as spelled out in the RFP, state some very specific as the type, which will be out tomorrow, the types of services that we are looking for, and it might mean that it could be a vendor that maybe has multiple therapists or clinicians, and/or maybe one individual or a handful. The point being is, we expect to have multiple awardees in this mental health request for purchase. So I hope I'm answering your question, I feel like I'm not, but...
I'm, I'm probably not helping, but it is coming out tomorrow, and we will also be bringing information to the board, because it will be, it won't be released until tomorrow morning.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out how, how do we... Okay, I was just trying to figure out, how do you measure it?
It's a fair question. So there's, when we look at the RFP, there is a measure of what services we're going to expect. But once we move forward, there will be criteria of what we expect and be able to measure in the sense of, sorry, what occurred and in what fashion they did it. I'm sorry, I'm being very vague, it's just that...
Dr. Gilbert's being vague on purpose and the reason being our procurement laws. And so the RFP has to be available at one time to all vendors. And so by talking here tonight about specifics on it, and so I just want to be transparent, he's not trying to evade any questions, it's just we'll have...
Well, I am, but just from the legal perspective.
There's so much that governs schools that doesn't govern the public and sometimes corporate and entities that governs public school purchasing that we have to be aware of. So the RFP is coming out tomorrow. All those that want to access it will get all the information at the same time. And this has been a struggle for us in the last couple of months because we've had people asking us about this RFP. It is nothing more than making sure that we don't have somebody that comes up and says foul play, people know information before, or they interjected themselves in to create the RFP. And then that would delay these services for kids and we won't stand for delaying any services to kids. So we've been very careful and cautious. They've heard from me as well.
Maybe it's best that I just wait till tomorrow and read it.
I would hope so, yes. Thank you. Sorry.
Ms. Brunner, did you have some comments or questions?
Thank you for the presentation, for bumping it up. And I just, you know, I have a million things written down, but the one thing I want to ask for sake of time is if you could give a little more explanation about what the process is going to look like with the community partnership slash national experts slash kids slash, you know, City of Chandler and the Town of Gilbert? Like, can you give us a little more of what to expect of that?
Well, I think there's probably a couple of pieces in there. One, in regards to the roundtables, I may defer, but in the sense of how it relates to students, that is in process, what that's going to look like and what's going to be the best approach. Because we need to make sure that as we're doing that, we're cognizant of the needs of students and where they might be when we're looking at bringing students together and trying to address the needs. As it relates to the roundtables, this is where, as we are bringing the roundtables out and having our community partners involved, that's specifically what we want. We want to start with meeting with our community partners. Like I said, City of Chandler, Town of Gilbert, Gilbert Unified School District, and some of our community partners to start what that's going to look like and how we're going to bring information to our community. And then how we're going to expand that to make sure that we're also bringing our resources in. We have a plethora of resources within the Chandler area that can be utilized and making sure that we're getting that information out to our community. But we want to start with making sure that we're bringing in our community partners so it is a community event. It's a community coming together. And again, we have our place in this in the sense of the district, but if we don't have our community partners involved, it's going to be a tough road, you know, in moving forward to bring some type of change.
Just to follow up, so, you know, as I had communicated with everyone over the last few months, I just felt like we needed a comprehensive plan. And I think you've pulled a lot together to show that tonight. And I think that we're going to get even closer to that with this process and I just wanted to communicate that out, that I feel like when we first got started, it was like, where's the biggest fire, right? And then let's put that one out. And then like there's 42 other fires. And I think now is the time for us to make sure it's community-based, evidence-based, and comprehensive. So we are hitting, you know, the addiction issues and reaching kids before to hopefully get to the place of suicidal ideation. And so I just appreciate you working towards that.
Thank you very much, which is, you know, why we did bring our prevention coach in connecting to that. And our focus is a comprehensive plan, but we really believe in order for it to be comprehensive that we can work with students and all of our families, it needs to be a community approach.
And Ms. Brunner, we've gotten feedback from community members, some community members that are actually here tonight, that it isn't just a local issue. It's going to take that. That's why we reached out to the City of Chandler, to the Town of Gilbert, and to Gilbert Public Schools. So that Solutions Team is meeting this week to actually roll out where the next steps go, to include our agencies and our resources, then to have that forum. But it isn't a one-step process and this is something we've talked about. It's a multiple-tiered process so that just doesn't happen because of the state kids are in right now, but that it actually continuously goes. And we're looking at the fact that the partners at the table will create the next forum and the next forum and the next forum until we get some additional supports and resources in the community or through the state to be able to handle this vast issue and challenge.
I want to thank you again for the presentation and I also want to thank Mrs. Brunner because I know she's been involved in some of the looking out for resources and helping find some things and communicating that with our team here.
If I could, if I may, I'm sorry. I appreciate that you brought that up because Ms. Brunner has been real pivotal in helping us and looking at what resources that we can bring in and getting others involved. And I think we've recruited her to also help a little bit in the roundtable in the sense of, you know, things of that nature, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. And so, thank you very much. I know I'll have some questions for you probably that I'll email you because we are kind of out of time for this evening. So thank you so much and I am looking forward to seeing a lot of these things getting implemented.
Madam President, one thing before this study session's done. We are looking at, with working with Mrs. Ingrisal's team, to have a summary of the study session, to be able to get that out for people that weren't able to view or be able to be a part of the study session. Because we want to be more transparent with the information, get more communication out. We have a video of the study session. We'll summarize that and get it out to our families as well.
Wonderful, I think that's a great idea. We will take a short break and then we will get started on our meeting, probably about one minute.